Namaste everyone here and very happy Janmasmi to all of you. And all audience who are watching us and will be watching us. Uh, this is amazing, this is the idea uh brought up by Veluji. That let us celebrate Janmasmi on virtual platform in a very different way. And I really appreciate this idea. Because somehow, you know, we are so close without, you know, spending much time uh to Krishna. You know knowingly and knowingly, we are always with him and from chat, from our childhood. Uh like uh from Lori, we have started our life with Krishna. So Krishna consciousness is in our heart. Uh I share my slideshow just for sake of, you know, uh selection of the poetry which I have kept. And then I'll discuss whatever I have come to my, you know, heart today. Because this is something, you know, I love it. Uh that is why I, I, I could gather all those things. So I start, sorry. Am I, am I audible, uh Veluji? Yeah right.
Yes.
So uh very happy Janmasmi. And let's embark on a journey into world of Bhakti poetry. Particularly when it is devoted to divine figure of Lord Krishna guided by wisdom of Shri Arvind. Shri Arvind's words illuminate the essence of art and its connection to spirituality. It reminds us that art can only truly find its purpose and achieve its highest perfection. When transforms exquisite experiences it seeks to express into sustained spiritual experience. In the context of Bhakti poetry on Krishna, this insight is particular profound. I recite Krishna, uh Shri Arvind's poem, uh Krishna. At last, I find a meaning of soul's birth into this universe terrible and sweet. I who have felt the hungry heart of earth aspiring beyond heaven to Krishna's feet. I've seen the beauty of immortal eyes and heard the passion of lovers flute. And known our deathless ecstasy's surprise and sorrow in my heart forever mute. Nearer and nearer now the music draws, life shudders with strange felicity. All nature is wide in maldness, pause hoping her lord to touch, to clasp, to be. For this one moment lived the eighty's past, the world now throes fulfilled in me at last. Bhakti poetry is not merely literary verse. Or establishing philosophy of any sect, it is profound spiritual journey. It seeks to transcend the boundaries of human language. And intellect to convey the depth of love, devotion and spiritual realization. When a Bhakti poet like Narasi, Surdas or Mira sings of Lord Krishna. They are not merely crafting verses, they are channeling a spiritual experience. On the realm of Bhakti yoga philosophy, the absolute truth takes on persona of divine being known as Krishna. The very name Krishna derived from Sanskrit resonates with profound significance. As it signifies the embodiment of an all-attractive allure. Krishna serves as the ultimate object of the soul's affection. With the genesis of this affection arising from the reciprocal love between soul and divine. What distinguishes Krishna is his remarkable versatility in accommodating seekers, devotees and adores from various walks of life. Be it the ardent seeker Arjuna, the passionate lovers Radha and Gopis. The devotees soul like Mira, Narasi, Surdas, Dijabai and Tukara. The contemplative yogi like Uddhav or the spiritual luminaries such as Shri Arvind and the mother. All find their own distinct pathways to approach Krishna. This journey unfolds though through the channels of love, devotion, wisdom, surrender, rigorous spiritual practices and unwavering dedication. Krishna assumes oneness with the seeker or devotee transcending the boundaries that separate the divine from the seeker. It is indeed fascinating to observe striking parallelism in the life experience of these poets and devotees. Like Narasi, Mira, Surdas and Shri Arvind steeped in Krishna's consciousness. Their encounters with divine bear remarkable resemblance, akin to an intimate dialogue with Lord Krishna himself. All of us are familiar with the poet Surdas. Surdas' early life was shadowed by blindness. Born into a humble family struggling to make ends meet. Abundant by circumstances, he embraced a life begging, served from his home and loved one. Yet an inner awakening soon dawned, exposing the emptiness of material perceives. Driven by an innate spiritual longing, Surdas embarked on a transformative journey of Tuvrindavan. Living behind the scent comforts of his former life. During his pilgrimage, he paused at the Trankal Goghat along the Yamuna river. A pivotal moment that led him to the revered sage Sri Balabacharya. Under his newfound guru's benevolent guidance, Surdas experienced a profound inner transformation. The sage's wisdom unveiled enchanting tapestry of Shri Krishna's divine play. Igniting the flames of spiritual insight within the young seeker. With, with the heart now illuminated by divine love and devotion, Surdas' voice became an instrument of transcendence. He sang not as mere mortal but as a vessel through which the celestial melodies of Shri Krishna's leelas, his divine dramas resonated. Transcending the boundaries of the material world. Now I have no test for petty emotions, my longings are in the ocean of Shri Krishna. His collection of poem named Sur Sagar subbed as the canvas upon which Surdas painted by print minute of Lord Krishna's Bal Leela. Surdas narrates. Surdas narrates Bal Leela. Mayya mori kabuhu badegi choti, just a second. Iti bar muhe dood biyath bhai ajuhu choti ki choti. Tu jo kahat balki veni joo hai kaadat goavat naavat jaaye jaaye nagin sih goi loote. Kaad dood chho piavat bachi bachi det na maakhan roote. Mayya mori kabuhu badegi choti. It's amazing that Krishna uh as a child is worried about the hair and the choti. So it connects with our own, you know, human uh feeling and emotion. Same if you, if you, if you see uh in another poem, uh he is fighting with his brother. Mayya mori daau vahak ke jayo, muso kahat mool ko lino, jasmati kab jayo. You know, he's, he complains to his mother that even, I'm not your own child, that is why my brother, he teases me. Kaha karo hi risuke maaray khelan ho nahi jaat. Puni puni kahat koon hai mata, koon hai deero taat. Goree nand jasoda gori tu kat sialalgaat. Mayya mori daau vahak ke jayo. This is, you know, uh a kind of nectar to recite this kind of poem when Surdas is writing. Mayya mori daau vahak ke jayo. Or uh or some other poem like uh mayya mori maini maakhan khayo. It is like, it is in. Okay, I'm not PPT person, so uh uh I'm mayya mori maini maakhan khayo. We must have heard so many times, but again, you know, uh it connects so well even today. That Krishna Rup, Bal Rup appears in front of us. Surdas also had written uh Brahmar Gita where he describes Brahman as Krishna. And he, he writes after Krishna went to Mathura and did not return himself. He sent a message to the devotee through Uddhava. He tried to elevate the Gopi's pain of separation by imparting teachings on formless Brahman and yoga. Gopis rejected the idea and showed helplessness as they are in love and they do not have place for yoga. Where Gopi says, this is it. Udo man na bhai dastis. Ek utoshu gyo shyamsan ko aarade is. Sithil bhai sabho maado bina jada deo bhenasiis. Swasa ati kiraahi aas laa gayi ji bhi. Ootie baris udo man na bhai dastis. Tum to sakha shyamsundar ke sakal jog ke. Surdas rasikan ki batiyaa purvo man chaddees. I mean uh the, the. Illiterate, so-called illiterate Gopis, they said, uh we don't know about all this in yoga and, you know. And we have only one, only one heart. We cannot, you know, once it is given to Krishna, we cannot, you know, afford to do yoga, it does not work here. So you go and tell Krishna that uh you, either you come here and stay with us or, or just let, let us be in our uh status. State of mind, the way we are living. So he, Uddha who is Jyani went back and he realized that the bhakti, the, the love which Gopi does. That is beyond uh yoga and other things. So this is uh Surdas has written uh in Uddhav Shakka also. Similar, a similar parallel can be drawn in the life of Gujarat's river Adi Kavi, Narasi Mehta. Vishnav saint known for song Vishnav Janthu Teene Re Khaye. And whose devotional songs about Krishna are widely sung in Gujarat and Rajasthan Bham. After, this is something very similar kind of, you know, their life experience happens. So after similar, uh after the death of his mother, Narasi married Manik Bhai. Narasi and his wife went to stay at his cousin uh in place in Julagir. However, the cousin's wife Barbie was particularly ill-tempered woman, always taunting and insulting Narasi. When he could take it no longer, he left the house and went to a nearby forest. Where he fasted and meditated for seven days by a secluded chivalry. Until Shiva appeared before him in person. On the poet's request, the lord took him to Dwarga and showed him the eternal Ras Leela of Shri Krishna and Gopis of Vrindavan. A legend has it that the poet transfixed by the spectacle burnt his hand with the torch he was holding. But he was so engrossed in ecstatic vision that he was oblivious of the pain. He has written in one of his collection of poem Putra Veera. He says, "With my manhood dissolve and I became the lord's lover, I lost the awareness of my body. I became his go-between and I mixed with Gopis to convince Radha to discard her thing." Then the Lord Krishna pleased with him with his Narasi's loves, placed his hand on his head to bless his devotee. The poet says, "My throat choked, choked and I was speechless. I who was unconscious before become conscious, the worldly sense receded and my primal speech awoke from its sleep." According to the well-known legend Narasi Mehta prompted by Shri Krishna himself. Resolved to offer his praises and partake in that divine ecstasy of ras within mortal real. He made solemn vow to com- uh to compose approximately twenty-two thousand cadence or devotional composition throughout his lifetime. Narasi Mehta prabhniing he sang hymns extolling the virtues of Lord Krishna. Exploring various aspects of the divine, including divine Bal Rup, which we can see in Prabhadiya. Hey jaad nee jaadva, Krishna govaadiya, tuje bina denma kon jaashen. Uh Veluji, I'm not so good with the PPT, so I'm trying uh. Tuje bina denma kon jaashen. Raan se ne saath govaat toore vadia, vado re govaadiyo kon dhashen. This is the morning uh, you know, there is, uh in Gujarat, there was a tradition. That they used to wake up early in the morning, people used to wake up early in the morning and they used to take a round of the village or whatever. In uh by singing Prabhadiya. It's even indeed started in during Gandhiji's movement, national movement. So in that time, this Narasi Mehta's Prabhadiya used to sing and it is so popular in Gujarat's uh people's heart. Uh where, uh you know, by singing this, people, they awake. Next is. Uh another poem which we learnt in school. Jal kamal chhadi jane balaa, swami amaro jaakshay, jaakshay taney marshay, baad hatiya laakshay. So uh when Krishna goes to. Sorry. When uh Krishna tries to save uh. Uh try to save villagers from that nagh which was uh, which was in that Yamuna river. That time, this poem was, you know, on the base of that, this poem was written. I think Satya, I need Satya for this.
Yeah.
Satya, I uh because it, it doesn't work for with me and these poems are not visible. Maybe I overlook this PPT and I just, you know, read from my uh preparation, whatever I have done. This metaphor of uh. And another poem by Narasi Mehta is amazing. When he said, "Jagi nee joo to jagad de se nee." Just a second, let me show if it is possible here. Jagi nee joo to jagad de se nee, unghuma atpata bhokvaase. Chitt chaitanya vilas kadrookche, brahman latka kare brahma paase. This metaphor is amazing when, when he says that when I wake up, the world recedes from my sight. Only in sleep, it's bewildered in miseries and enjoyment perplexes me. My being is a play of consciousness, the Brahman playing with the Brahman. So it's, it's Bira, you know, and then Narasi Mehta was not so literate, you know, people say that. And they write brahman latka kare brahma paase. So we are all Brahman and we are just, you know, playing our role, that is what uh Narasi Mehta communicates here. Another poet, Mira, who is very close to, whose work, whose bhajans are very close to us is uh. He can, she can tell her adore for Krishna was raised by her grandparents after her mother's passing. At tender age, Mira fell deeply in love with Krishna, idol gifted by, her, gifted by Dadu Dayad. She embraced Krishna, perceiving the idol as her divine spouse. Despite confronting numerous trials throughout her existence, Mira dissolved into consciousness of Krishna. Unperturbed even by deadly poison, distinctly purchased, Mira possessed an un- un- unswearing devotion of Lord Krishna. Her verses and songs vividly articulate her profound affection and yearning for her beloved Krishna. Her life serves as an embodiment of Krishna consciousness, characterized by unwavering devotion and commitment. She sang, "Mere to guru dar gopal, dusro mukhi, jaake sar moor mukhut, mero patisho." And Mira magan bhai, har ek ek unghaaye, saam pe dhar ra rana beja, Mira haad diho jaye, naa idhwaan dekhna lagi, sali gram pay. So nothing worked when uh Rana was not in favor of Mira's bhajan towards Krishna. Uh Mira Bhai's songs speak of both of, both the joy and pain of love. Metapher kili Mira Bhai points to the longing of the personal self atman to be one with the universal self-permata. Which is a poet's representation of Krishna. Mira Bhai wrote her songs in Ajastani, Brach, Rasha and they were translated into Hindi and Gujarati. During the most challenging moments of their lives, these poets were introduced to Krishna by their gurus. While Shri Arvind had several indirect encounters with Krishna. His journey commenced within the confines of Paliku jail and later extended to the port room. However, it was under the sagacious guidance of his guru Lele that Krishna consciousness not only left an indelible mark on his essence. But also culminated in a profound identity identification of Krishna, with Krishna. The experience within the walls of Paliku jail, a moment deeply contemplated by Shri Arvind as he observed. I feel tempted to read these lines. "I looked at the jail that secluded me from man and it was no longer by its high walls that I was imprisoned. No, it wa- it was Vasudev who surrounded me. I walked under the branches of the tree in front of my cell, but it was not the tree. I knew it was Vasudev, it was Shri Krishna whom I saw standing there and holding over me his shape. I looked at the bars of my cell, the very grunting that, that did duty for the door and again I saw Vasudev. It was Narayana who was guarding and standing sentry over me. Or I lay on the force blanket that were given me for ca- for a couch and felt the arms of Shri Krishna around me. The arms of my friend and lover, this was the first use of the deeper vision he gave me. I looked at the prisoners in the jail, the thieves, the murderers, the swindlers. And as I looked at them, I saw Vasudev. It was Narayana whom I found in this darkened souls and misuse bodies." One more thing is asked by disciple as to why he chose Pondicherry. Shri Arvind replied, "I could not question, it was Krishna's adesh, I had to obey." Later on, I found it was for the Ashram and all the work. In this letter to Sadhguru, one of the letters to Sadhguru, Shri Arvind mentioned about Shri Krishna. Krishna as a godhead is the lord of Ananda, love and bhakti. As an incarnation, he manifests the union of wisdom and works and leads. The earth's evolution through this towards union with the divine by Ananda, love and bhakti. Shri Arvind's vision of Krishna's consciousness aligns harmoniously with the perspectives of these eminent poets. They perceive Krishna as the embodiment of joy, love and devotion. A divine incarnation harmonizing wisdom and action, guiding humanity towards union with the divine. Through the confluence of joy, love and devotion. But the critical distinction lies in how these poets encounter Krishna. As devout souls uniting with him in their final moments. While Shri Arvind's communion with Krishna transcends conventional devotion to merge his identity with Krishna. The verses and poetry of Sur, Mira, Narasimha and Shri Arvind collectively grant us. A profound experience of supreme bliss drawing us deeply into the realm of Krishna consciousness. With this, these are the things, these are the course which I really love and keep it in my heart. And this is the life in any Indian person live by keeping this Krishna consciousness with this. I end my uh presentation and last uh quote which I recite from Shri Arvind. Uh which I really love and many times I keep on reciting another. "The boy with the flute of Shri Krishna, the lord descended into the world play from the divine Ananda." His flute is the music of the call, which seeks to transform the lower ignorant play of mortal life. And bring into it and establish in its place the leela of his divine Ananda. With this, I wish you all happy Janmasmi and over to Velu Meraji, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for really setting the context and the right note, starting us off on a right note. Uh I really think, I mean, I, I really have to be thankful to all of you who have joined us on this virtual. For this virtual sat-sang as we share our, you know, love for Shri Krishna. So it's really good to see all of you here. I think um I'm just going to pick up from where Kiranjee you stopped and then we'll keep building up uh the momentum. And we go deeper and deeper into Krishna consciousness. So I um. I had few thoughts, but some of you, some of it you've already kind of spoken about. But I want to pick up on the theme related to uh Krishna, the descent from Ananda. And focusing on Krishna's leela with the Gopis and again, everything in the light of Shri Arvind. So I'm just going to share um few pictures that I have collected. And uh let me just, I hope this is visible. Okay, so I thought we focus on. One particular story, um or at least I mean, I wanted to kind of focus on this one particular story. From the Krishna leela which we find in Bhagwad about Krishna stealing the clothes of the Gopis. So um interestingly, Shri Arvind has zoomed into this one particular story from the Bhagwad. And what he describes is so profound, but before we go there, let's. And I've collected a few paintings from various miniature painting traditions of India where this particular um. Story, legend is depicted. And uh first, let's first find out what Shri Arvind says in terms of who the Gopis are. Uh Kiranjee spoke a little bit about, you know, the poetry of Narasi Mehta and Surdas and Mira of course. Um you know, they, they were not ordinary people, their experiences of. The kind of identity they had through their bhakti with Shri Krishna or the consciousness of Shri Krishna. They are really channeling what Gopis were uh, were symbolized or were realities of. So these, this is what Shri Arvind says who these Gopis were. He speaks, uh he says, "The Gopis are not ordinary people in the proper sense of the word." And before this, actually, he's, again, this is a very long letter of Shri Arvind. Where he describes Gopis are not just symbolic um entities, they are realities to the poets who. Saw, who had vision of who these Gopis were madly in love with Shri Krishna. So then he continues in that letter and I've zoomed in on this passage. "The Gopis are not ordinary people in the proper sense of the word. They are extraordinary by their extremeness of love, passionate devotion, unreserved self-giving. Whoever has that, however humble his position in other respects. Learning, external sanctity, et cetera, et cetera, can easily follow after Krishna." This fits in perfectly with what Kiranjee was describing. Surdas or Narasi Mehta who came from these humble backgrounds with a lot of what we in ordinarily, ordinary understanding think as disadvantages. Financial status, educational, you know, the so-called formal educational status or whatever. However humble his position in other respects, learning, external sanctity, et cetera. Can easily follow after Krishna and reach him. That seems to me the sense of the symbol of the Gopis. There are many other significances of course, that is only one among the many. Um. So zooming in on that particular story of the Bhagwad, Shrimad Bhagwad about Krishna stealing the clothes. So Shri Arvind speaks about the leela of the Gopis, seems to be conceived as something which is always going on in a divine vocal. And which projected itself in an earthly brindavan and can always be realized. And its meaning made actual in the soul. So what is the sole significance of this particular leela of Krishna stealing the clothes? This is what he says. One little sentence and deep philosophy is there. The seeker after divine knowledge finds in the. The seeker after divine knowledge finds in the description of Krishna stealing the robes of the Gopis. One of the deepest parables of God's ways with the soul. That's the one who is the Jnannamargi, the seeker after divine knowledge. He or she finds deepest parables of God's ways with the soul. How the Jnani will merge into the infinite, into the divine. By letting go of all that is covering all the whales. The devotee will find a perfect rendering in divine act of his heart's mystic experiences. That's the bhakta, the prurient and the puritan, two faces of one temperament. The one who has a very puritanistic way of looking at things, only a lustful story. Men bring what they have in themselves and see it reflected in the scripture. So this one story has been really um. You know, misunderstood because we bring our, what we have in ourselves, if all we see is. Krishna being a little naughty teenager, um stealing the clothes of. Gopis, we will never understand the deeper significance of this. But we have to rise in our bhakti, in our love for Krishna, love for the divine and in our. Um seeking of the highest mind, highest knowledge for the divine. Then only we can get the sole significance of this. So the idea being that we have to, whatever veil, we cannot take out. Whatever coverings of our mind and heart, we cannot remove, God takes it away. And Sri Aravindu has another euphemism that speaks of that. Uh Kiranjee mentioned about um Sri Aravindu in Alipur jail. He writes in his Tales of Prison Life Kara Kahini that for the first few days when he was sent to jail. He went through these questioning, this kind of a questioning mind. Why Lord me, why now when I thought I was doing your work for the freedom of my country? Why now, why me? And then a voice comes after a few days, the voice of Shri Krishna and he says, wait. And you will reveal, you will, the answer will be revealed to you. And again, it's like, what, what he hears is that whatever attachment you could not get rid of. Attachment to even this noble work of, you know, fighting for the freedom of my motherland. That attachment I have taken away, that desire I have taken away because I am raising you for another work. India will be freed, but there is another work that you have to do, that India needs to do. For the humanity, for the world, and I'm raising you for that. So that's where he says, then Shri Krishna placed Geeta in me and I was able to do the yoga of the Geeta. So again, it's a matter of, you know, whatever bindings of our own mental and. Emotional preferences and likes and dislikes, the whales that we carry. God has his own way or her own way or Brahman has its own way of taking away those whales. Because that's the only way we can unite with the infinite. And then I thought I will also share one more uh painting style because we are talking about how. Krishna, Krishna bhakti, Krishna lela and all aspects of Krishna. Uh influenced various expressions of art. So this is one particular art form that I've been very intrigued by, it's um kind of a variant of the Odisha Patta Chitra. And this is called Ashwanari, um and where, and they do it in Ashwa and also in elephant form. Where all the Gopis, the physical bodies of the Gopis are. Become kind of a vehicle on which Krishna rides. So I was very surprised to, I mean, when I first saw them in um. Uh Kalaparishad in Bangalore, I mean, I was just very intrigued by this, this is not a very good picture, but that's. That was my first exposure to this kind of art form and they had several displayed in that museum. So the intricacy, and these are all black and white, you know, uh using ink. Um and just, it's beautiful to see. The kind of madness, that craziness that can come in love for Krishna. It's like, you know, I, they, they will offer themselves completely. The extremeness of love that Sri Aravindu was referring to, the quote with which I started. That the painter, the artist, visioned, envisioned that kind of love madness. Or that kind of extremeness of love, that they would offer themselves, that, you know. Krishna becomes the supreme rider on every, every aspect of their being. Every aspect of their physical, emotional, vital, mental being is offered. So that I thought I will share and I want to also share a little bit. About one poem that Sri Aravindu translated, which he gave the title Love Mad Itself. To kind of build up this theme of extremeness of love of the Gopi. So I'm going to stop sharing here as I read that poem of Sri Aravindu. I mean, it's actually a poem by Maran, one of the Tamil Vashnav saint poems. Who was given the name Namma, Namma Alvar, our Oliver, our saint. Our words were the Vashnav saints and the twelve great saints, Maran was considered one of them. Uh and Sri Aravindu has written a little commentary about him and he's translated few of his poems. So I thought I'll just share the one poem which he titled Love Mad. Because that fits in with the theme of this extremeness of love for the Gopis. So um let me just read that poem. And then I'll share it in the chat box also. So um Sri Aravindu says. The poetic image used in these verses is characteristically Indian, the mother of a love-stricken girl. Symbolizing the human soul yearning to merge into the godhead. So the girl about whom her mother is speaking, this girl symbolizes the human soul. Who is yearning to merge into the godhead, the mother is complaining to her friends of the sad plight of her child. Whom love for Krishna has rendered mad. The effect of the madness being that in all things she's able to see nothing but forms of Krishna. The ultimate spirit of the universe. So um Sri Aravindu was. Not only the poet par excellence, the seer Kavi, you know, the Rishi Kavi, but he was also a great translator. And his translations from various languages, we'll, Gayatri will share few more in the next session. I mean, in the next section, but this is from Tamil poetry of Namalwar. So, so ten stands up, a short poem, I begin. Seated she caresses earth and cries, this earth is Vishnu's. Salutes the sky and bids us, behold the heaven he ruleth. Or standing with tear-filled eyes cries aloud, oh sea-hued lord. All helpless am I, my friends, my child he has rendered mad. Or joining her hands she fancies, the sea where my lord reposes. Or hailing the ruddy sun she cries, yes, this is his form. Language she bursts into tears and mutters Narayan's name. I'm dazed at the things she's doing, my gazelle, my child-shaped godlike. Knowing she embraces red fire, is scorched and cries, oh deathless. And she hugs the wind, it is my own Govinda she tells us. She smells of the honeyed tulsi, my gazelle-like child. Ahh me, how many the pranks she plays for my sinful eyes to behold. The rising moon she showeth, it is the shining gem-hued Krishna. Or eyeing the standing hill she cries, oh come, high Vishnu. It rains and she dances and cries out, he hath come, the god of my love. Or the, oh the mad conceits he hath given to my tender dear one. The soft limped calf she embraces, for such did Krishna tend. And follows the gliding serpent explaining, that is his couch. I know not where this will end, this folly's play in my sweet one. Afflicted a for my sins by him, the divine magician. Where tumblers dance with their paws, she runs and cries Govinda. At the charming notes of a flute she faints, for Krishna he plays. When cowherd dames bring butter, she is sure it was tasted by him. So mad for the lord who sucked out the demoness's life through her bosom. In rising madness she raves, all worlds are by Krishna made. And she runs after folk ash smeared, forsooth they serve high Vishnu. Or she looks at the fragrant tulsi and claims Narayan's garland. She's ever for Vishnu, my darling, or in or out of her wits. And in all your wealthy princes she but sees the lord of Lakshmi. At the sight of beautiful colors she cries, oh my lord, world scanning. And all the shrines in the land to her are shrines of Vishnu. In awe and in love, unceasing she adores the feet of that wizard. All gods and saints are Krishna, devourer of infinite space. And the huge dark clouds are Krishna, all fame would she fly to reach them. Or the kind they graze on the meadow and thither she runs to find him. The lord of illusions, he makes my dear one pant and rave. Language she stares around her or gazes afar into space. She sweats and with eyes full of tears she sighs and faints away. Rising she speaks but his name and cries, do come, oh lord, ahh. What shall I do with my poor child overwhelmed by this maddest love? Love mad. This is what I think the mothers of all the Gopis would be thinking about. Their daughters and, you know, the mothers of the Gopals who were that crazy about Krishna's love. One call of his flute and they would just running, go running. So love mad, Tamil Vashnav saint's poetry, Maran, translated by Sri Aravindu. I'll share the poem in the group, but it's just, you know, I can go on and on, but I want to, in the interest of time. Stop here and invite my friend and colleague Gayatri from Sri Aravindu Society, Gayatri Majumdar. To take us a little deeper into Sri Aravindu's translation and Sri Aravindu's own poetry of inspired by. Love for Shri Krishna. So Gayatri will be joining us for another longer session, I think later this month. So we'll introduce her properly then, but Gayatri, if you are here, I know you are here, but I don't see your video. So if you can just turn on your video and unmute yourself. And then let's the, let the satsang continue. Gayatri, are you there? I see her name here. Okay, then shall we, maybe she's just stepped away or something. Um we can go with the next. I think we have, Binduji, do you want to continue? Then we'll invite Gayatri once she comes back. Maybe she stepped away. So Binduji is also known to most of the people here, she's an artist based out of Delhi. And she also teaches painting in a school, so rest of the introduction we'll save it for some other time.
Yeah, it's namaste to all.
Oh, okay, just Gayatri is also here now.
Okay, later, later.
Yeah, uh Gayatri. And you're me, unmute yourself please, Gayatri.
Yeah, sorry, uh so I'm, I'm here, but she can continue, I'll, I can get.
I think, let's, let's finish, let's do the poetry first. So since we were talking about translations and then we'll bring in the painting and sculpture with Sneha.
Right, so um I think I missed a bit of the beginning, so I don't know whether Krishna, the poem was actually read out as.
It was, Kiranjee started with that, yeah.
That's wonderful. So I, looking at the time, I'll just then read out a little bit of his translations as we had discussed. And um I just want to start by thanking you and Dr. Kiran Singh and everybody else for this and happy Janmasmi to everyone. So um this is Sri Aravindu's translations, of course, the themes would be a little similar to what has already been, you know, talked about and said. And this is his translations from Bengali bhakti poetry. And notable contribution is the manner in which he made the beauty of Vaishnava bhakti poetry accessible. And of course, the most renowned poet of that, you know, genre is Vidyapati or Vidyapati. He would always spell it with a B, Vidyapati, who was there from thirteen fifty-two to fourteen fourteen. And Vidyapati, as many of you would know, lived in what is now Bihar and wrote in a form of Mithili. Closely related to the Bengali of his time. But had a broad influence on the early development of the literatures of eastern India, all the literatures. And Sri Aravindu read Vidyapati Spada Boli in the eighteen nineties in the context of the Bengali tradition and translated. Selections from his poems. But he, as I said, as I had mentioned some time ago to you, Beluji, that he had also translated other. Uh poets, bhakti poets, including of course Chandidasa. And there was one particular one which drew me by someone called Nidhi Babu. And this one he did around the nineteen hundreds, so a little earlier. And it goes like this, there's no title, but it goes like this. What else have I to give thee? I have yielded my heart at thy discretion. And is there than the heart of closer shielded reluctant sweet possession? Dear, if thou know of such as yet ungiven, I will not grudge but yielding think it heaven. So very concise poem, you know, crisp poem in which a lot has been packed, so to speak. And of course, from Letters on Yoga too, he has described a lot of the approaches, you know, Vaishnava. Uh theories and sadhana and approaches to the spiritual parts and he writes that. Uh they, the Vaishnavas accept the world as a lela, but the true lela is elsewhere in the eternal brindavan. All the religions which believe in the personal godhead accept the universe as a reality, a lela. Or a creation made by the will of God, but temporal and not eternal. The aim is the eternal status above, that is the eternal brindavan, of course. And he talks about the different approaches through love and bhakti, which both of you have, you know, alluded to. And he says that when there is the approach through the heart, through love and bhakti, its highest culmination. Is in a transcendent Ananda, which Dr. Singh also mentioned. An unspeakable bliss or beautitude of union with the divine through love. The school of Chaitanya laid special and indeed sole emphasis on this way. And made this the whole reality of Krishna consciousness. But the transcendent Ananda is there at the origin and end of all existence. And this is not and cannot be the sole way to it. One can arrive at it also through the Vasudevah consciousness, which is a wider, more mentalized approach. As in the method of the Gita where knowledge, works, a bhakti are all centered in Krishna. The one, the supreme, the all and arrive through the cosmic consciousness to the luminous transcendence. So I, I found it really, you know, illuminating that he distinguished this a bit and. Uh you know, gave us a clear roadmap, so to speak. Uh so I'll go to the translations directly and this first one is. Uh from a poem by Chandidasa, which first appeared in Ahana and Other Poems. Published in nineteen fifteen and it's called Karma, translated however into Radha's complaint. Radha's complaint. Love, but my words are vain as air. In my sweet joyous youth, a heart untried, thou tookst me in love's sudden snare. Thou wouldst not let me in my home abide. And now I have not else to try, but I will make my soul one strong desire and into ocean leaping die. So shall my heart be cooled of all its fire. Die and be born to life again as Nanda's son, the joy of brothers' girls. And I will make thee Radha then, a laughing child's face set with lovely curls. And then I will love thee and then leave, under the codms bows when thou goest by. Bound to the water mourn or eve, lean on the tree fluting melodiously. Thou shalt hear me and fall at sight. Under my charm, my voice shall wholly move thy simple girl's heart to delight. Then shalt thou know the bitterness of love. So it's described as an old but you know so very delightful in all its aspects. The second poem is of course Vidyapatis and he translated twenty-two poems of Vidyapatis and this I believe is poem number sixteen. Which again, you know, has that melody and goes like this. Beautiful ry, the flowerlight maid risen from the river where she played. Saw under downcast lids and shy the lovely boy, dark Krishna named. A high-born child with face afraid before her elders and eyes ashamed she might not gaze as she went by. Oh subtle is that beautiful girl, she left the gracious troop behind. With half-turned face and half-declined, from far in front full sweeter call. She broke her carcinet of pearl and let the precious seedlings fall. Oh friends my broken carcinet, each girl her lovely hand it set stooping to find the scattered grape. Like birds that on white moonbeams feed of Krishna's shape took amorous heat. Divine the nectar that she drained, oh Krishna, from thy cheeks of light, yeah, each of each had honeyed side. Thus gazing girl and boy extend, love's boundaries seen by none but me, the poet, sweet Vidyapati. So again, you know, and it's very, very, you know, strong and high-born English, he would capture this essence of so much. You know, love and so if you want me to read one of his poems. Uh, you know, I I was thinking of mostly the translations. Or I had one poem which I had written because of constraint, I don't want to take it's almost, you know, time. So I'll just quickly read a poem I had read when I felt a strong pull towards Krishna, so it's called Love. As I fall into your arms, I can hear the distinct click of the jade door in a rusty corner of the galaxy. You, my lover, were impatient for this precise moment dispersing me to light. The night's jazz fused with cosmic dust and saxophone. You steady your gaze, your belief in me unwavering, even as I, howling to moon and streetlights grapple with my weakening knees. Tremble unable to pin the pain. You, my lover, was certain this would be the precise moment when I'd return your gaze broken. Wanting all the love your petalled heart can hold, demanding dissolving into the light substance of your presence. This night's other delights, twigging, drumming to my heartbeats. I marvel at the precision of your timing, just when I thought all that is not there seems lost, you appear, materialize. Stuck as you are in me in this garden of crooked pathways, wayward roots whispering, sleep oz of creatures and last sips of tea. This time, I'm certain, your departure is imminent. You take with you the night's last melody, the seasons will change as the ethers of your blues ache. Return those lost oz to me. You begin to perfect the tribe hunger, your flute wafting the stones and trickery. So this is my offering and tribute to the on this Janmash Tami and thank you all, this is a marvelous presentation.
Thank you, thank you, we'll we'll hear more of your poetry when you are, when you join us for the longer session but thank you so much Gayatri. And from poetry, we move on to painting and I think. It can stay a little longer, it's really, I mean, you know, immersive experience into Krishna, so Binduji please take forward.
Yeah, uh, first of all, it's very tough to speak something because so much has been said about Krishna and. I'm feeling little butterflies in my stomach, some sensation in my heart. I mean, I I just think that the only motive to celebrate Janmash Tami at this level is to at least feel the thirst of devotion. So I'm quite thankful to all of you, I will not say much about because. It's all, everything has been said so beautifully and. Uh, the presentation which I'm sharing today, it's a small video and it's a compilation of my paintings. I I don't know what should I say, my paintings or all are Krishna's paintings, all paintings are done by him. So just I've been a medium for these works and these. Just a second, I'll screen broadcast. I have to see and I have named this presentation as. I'm not able to. Everything on the, is it visible, the screen is visible?
No, not yet.
Okay. Just a second.
Satya is there.
Satya, can I share you, can I share you the video on WhatsApp?
I I think you you shared with me last night, let me see if I can find that out.
I even I can share with Satya also, we can play, I don't know, it's buffering.
I I found yours, shall I share?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, then you can just speak about that.
I'll tell you to stop for a minute.
Okay, okay.
I don't know why it's buffering, maybe because of some network issue. Yes.
The video?
It's visible and the name of the video is Krishna, yes, you can play yesterday's videos.
It's playing, is it playing, I can't see.
Uh, no, you still have to click it.
Okay, wait a minute. Oh, I. Okay, so um. Where did that, it's in this folder. Okay. It should be visible now.
Not yet. Uh, I, is it visible from my side? Is it visible from my side?
You tell me, is it visible?
Yes, yes, I think it's visible from my side or I don't know from your side, okay, you from my side only, I think.
Uh, Beluji, actually your screen is visible, uh, video is not visible.
Oh. Um, I can see the video.
Now, now it is visible.
Can you stop for a while?
Has it stopped?
No, just stop for a while, I want. Okay, let it continue.
Sorry, I could not pause in between but you can.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I've named Dvaita Dvaita. Because Krishna, what I think, what is duality also and oneness also. Krishna has presented himself in duality, Krishna and Sansar. Gopis are Sansar and and oneness when Gopis merge into Krishna or any, any, anyone, a yogi. So the main and all the paintings which were, which have been showed in this video. Are, they have that sense of merging in. Krishna's face merging into, merging with Radha or with Meera. There was, there was a group of paintings where Meera is shown merged into Krishnas. So it's very diff, it's very difficult to feel that whether Krishna is one. Or whether Krishna is a lover and we are beloved. So to make, I mean, we always say that there is no Bogi as Krishna and there is no Yogi as Krishna. So we have always seen Krishna in celebration. Krishna, the the poetry you have read, the poetry Gayatriji, Kiranji, Surdas. The poetry, the poetry you just can't discriminate that. Uh, whether it's a painting or a poetry, there is, there is no. Uh, you, you listen and you start visualizing something and you see painting and you start singing something inside. So in this, in art forms also, there is no duality with Krishna. So he is dancing and he is a yogi. The best thing what I feel is that we have never seen Krishna sitting in a yogic posture. Um, like Buddha, like Mahavira, meditating, to describe Krishna is yogi. We have seen Krishna as yogi with his Rihbhangha pose. He is so, he is so much in motion but that, that balance, that harmony, that yoga, that silences. That detachment is there. I think yoga, yogi for Krishna is the ultimate detachment. From Sansara, from Gopis and the best thing is that. He has made his Gopis like him. Gopis no more remain like Gopis, Radha no more remain like Radha, like Sansar. Radha also becomes Krishna, all Gopis also become Krishna. So this is what Sri Arobindo's, what you have been mentioning that. Uh, he has, Krishna has chosen him for a very higher purpose. A purpose for the humanity, purpose which is, which which still has to go for generations and generations. So that is all I would like to thank all. Thank you so much for this beautiful presentation by all of you, thank you.
Thank you. Binduji, amazing work you do. I mean, make it alive actually, it's so beautiful work you have done, thank you. Thank you, thank you so much. See, I mean, I was thinking, okay Krishna is not just yogi, Krishna is yogi Yogeshwar, right? Um, but then his yoga, his teachings of yoga also happen in the middle of a battle. Which is the Kurukshetra, Dharmukshetra, Kurukshetra, right? That it's in life, in world and no wonder why Sri Arobindo's identity with Shri Krishna. In fact, one of this, one time one Sadat asked if you were to, if I were to see your Vishvaroo. Would it be like the Krishna of Brindavan or the Krishna of Kurukshetra? He said Kurukshetra of course, in a funny humorous sort of way, so yeah. Uh, but so beautiful, thank you so much. So from painting, we now move on to sculpture. And Snehaji is with us who had earlier taken us on this beautiful journey into Indian iconography, the inner sense of Indian iconography in the light of Sri Arobindo. Snehaji, I just saw you quickly and then I think you're setting your problem list. So she's going to talk us, talk to us a little bit about the early iconography of Shri Krishna I fire.
Ma'am, there is some problem with my video, so if the next speaker can speak, I'm trying to fix it.
Okay, 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 no problem, no problem, yeah, no problem. So from painting, then we come back to Biswajita, if you are ready, we'll go into Urisa this time, so see. How Krishna is from everywhere, from Gujarat to Tamil Nadu, Bengal and Urisa. So Biswajita, just very quickly, she works at Sri Arobindo Society. She's been there for last six, seven years, she took a little bit gap and then she's now working very closely with me on all Renaissance related works. Um, and today she is beautifully dressed up in blue saree for Krishna's colors, so. Biswajita, I, if whatever you are comfortable in Hindi, English, please feel free, let's have a little bit of taste of Udyan also. And Hindi also, so please feel free, okay, all yours.
Namaste, happy Janmash Tami to all. Apko sunai de rahi meri aavas, sabhi ko, okay. To abhi main kya bolu, jaise sab kuch complete ho gaya. Sabhi ko pata hai ki jaise Shri Krishna ko hum, sraddha, bhakti se, matorab, sabka nazar ya alag hai. Bhakti karne ka ya phir pyaar karne ka tarika alag-alag hota hai. Lekin jaise aaj ye cheez hume yahan par mila, sabka ek-ek bhagna leke hum yahan par pahunch gaye hai, Shri Krishna ke upar. Jaise Binduji ka painting ya phir doctor Kiranji jaise bole, Meera bhai ke aur Beluji, Gayatri Dikka jo kabita ke upar bahut acha tha. To main Urisa se hoon aur aaj Shri Krishna se judeh hu yeh kuch baat main aapke saath share karna chate hain. Aap sabhi kabhi Jaydev ke naam sune honge, vo bahut bade bhakti the Shri Krishna ke. To vo 11 saal mein unka mata pitara ka dehaat ho gaya tha. So, he was born in 11 years old, his mother and father died. But he did not know anything about him. Because he thought in his mind that Shri Krishna is everything, my mother, father, my guru, everything is him. So, after going to his mother and father, they went to Shrikhetra. And one thing, even in our Orissa, this belief is that Shri Jagannath, Lord of Jagannath, today also Shri Krishna's heart is beating. So, they went to Shrikhetra. After going there, they built a small house and stayed there. And always, Sangkirtan, name, job, tab, everything was according to Shri Krishna. And that Shri Krishna and Radha's infinite love story, their creation, worship, and that, as much as Shri Krishna and Radha are concerned, we wrote them in the script. We called them Gita Gobindas. In Gita Gobindas, they wrote everything on Shri Krishna's head. One day, this happened. Shri Krishna and Radha are talking. Hey, dear, I want to stand on your two stars with Altas. I want to stand on my feet. They wanted to write their script. So, they said that Smara Garala Khanda Nam, Mama Sirasi, Mananam, Dehi Padapallava Madaram. But they could not write it. Then I remembered that the Lord I am, who cleanses sin, Radha is asking why you want to keep your feet on your walls? I cannot write it. So, then he left the script and called his wife, Padmavati. I am going out a little bit, finishing my work and taking a nap. So, my wife Padmavati said, "Okay, you go, finish your work and come." So, Padmavati started working. After going, the door opened. Then he rushed to see, Swami Jai Dev was standing there. He said, "Swami, you were already there. Your work is so soon finished." So, he smiled and said, "No, dear, my own script is still in mind." So, I immediately went home to write it. Then I don't want to forget it. So, I want to write the whole script first and then go to work. So, he said, "Okay, you go, write the script." Then he sat and did not write the line, he completed it. Dehi Padapallava Madaram. He completed it. Then he said, "I want to eat something, I need to eat, I need to celebrate." Padmavati gave him food. He started celebrating. After that, Padmavati brought his food and sat there. At that time, another door opened. So, Padmavati went and opened the door to see, Swami. Again standing, so they were astonished. "How can this happen? You were already there, celebrating." "But now you are here, I do not understand anything." So, Swami said, "What are you saying? I do not understand anything." So, I described it to him in front of him. "So, a little bit earlier, you were here, doing some work." So, Jai Dev knew it. So, then he came, his writing, he stopped writing, he was trying to figure out how to write. "I will not do it." So, he saw it, he completed the line. So, he understood that Swayam, Lord of Shri Krishna, was taking my clothes and coming to my house. And this line, he completed it. So, he wrote the lines, his meaning, he repeated it. That Radha and Krishna are the same, both have an end. They just wanted to say Shri Krishna. That I want to protect my soul. I want to protect my feet in your arms. So, he praised Lord Swayam. "Today, I am so lucky that Lord Swayam has come to my house." So, this is Jai Dev's story. And these small, small stories are on Shri Krishna's head. And one of them was a great Jagannath Das, who was a great servant of Shri Krishna. So, we, in the world, if we meet difficulty, happiness, we meet it. How we leave difficulty, how we close happiness, or how we live our dreams. We meet in one place, Bhagwad Gita. So, that Bhagwad Gita, the great Jagannath Das, translated it to Udia. So, I want to show you four lines in Udia, which are Bhagwad Gita's. I want to show you four lines in Udia. I want to show you, you will not understand, but I have translated it in English. So, please, you also have to read it a little bit. I want to show you. So, this. Are you showing something? I only show the value screen, nothing else. No, nothing is showing.
What should I, okay, yes, now it's, you can, we can see your screen.
Coming, no?
Yes, yes.
Okay. This is Jai Dev, who is the great servant of Orissa. So, I have some paintings of Gita Gobindas. That Radha Krishna's Madur Pram's construction, they were doing it at that time. And this great Jagannath Das, I, this Madur Pram's, Radha's feet's construction, this photo. And this great Jagannath Das, who is writing Udia Bhagwad. So, I want to show you these four lines. Gobind, gobind, gobind. Bodhu Gauru Chi, Ma Korand. Gobind, 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 Bodhu Gauru Chi, Ma Korand. Se Ma Korand, Pa Na Kori, Hare Le Tari, Le Brojanaari. Se Brojanaari, Nko Bo Yare, Mo No Mo Thau, Nirantare. Mo No Mo Nirantare, Thau Ha Krishna Boliji, Bo Chau. Ha Krishna Boliji, Chau Ji Bo Mo Te, Utaro Radha Madhav. So, this was Udia Bhagwad Gita. Today, as we have the occasion of Janmashtami, Shri Krishna is joining. At 12 o'clock, Happy Birthday will happen. So, for him. We, I mean, we discuss his image, language, his point, discussing the song I want to show you. And I know you all know the song. So, please, I am starting, but you also join, okay? Adharam, Madhuram, Badaram, Adhuram, Nayaram, Adhuram, Hasitam, Madhuram. Hridayram, Madhuram, Gamanam, Dura, Madhura, Adhipate, Rakhilam, Madhuram. Bacharam, Madhuram, Charitam, Adhuram, Basanam, Madhuram. Bolitam, Madhuram, Chalitam, Madhuram. Bramitam, Madhuram, Madhura, Adhipate, Rakhilam, Madhuram. Madhura, Adhipate, Rakhilam, Madhuram. But nobody came to me. I had to go alone.
No, no, we, we sang together, we sang. But if everyone unmute, then it will become a chicken.
So, this was some things related to Shri Krishna's side. And the prayers, Sangkirtan, as we said, Beludi said that Sadhguru, I was sitting at Dadji's side when I was young. So, I do not know the story, but I was singing.
This was completely appropriate for today. And this Madhura Adhipate, Akhilam, Madhuram, should start here, end here. It was very beautiful. Very good. And I think there are more people, maybe. Ahn, Dr Mair. There is someone else.
Yes, Sneha, Snehaji.
Yes, he is also there. Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much, Bispa Jita. Very, very sweet. Thank you. If you can just, yes, stop sharing the screen so Snehaji can then join. Yes, wow, so nice, lovely, lovely. So, from painting to music to poetry and now to iconography, Snehaji. I think many of you already know Sneha's background. So, we've had her before in the sessions. So, please, you'll have to keep it a little quick and short and sweet.
Yes, yeah. Ma'am, just tell me if the slides are moving, the full screen is moving.
No, not moving yet. Just we are seeing the first one.
Can you see the second slide?
No. No, I can see it on the corner.
Okay, but I think there's some, wait, let me.
Yeah, now, now it's moved, now it's moved.
Can you see the second slide?
Yes, earliest reference to Bhagwan Vasudev.
Yeah, so I'll be, I'll keep it brief. I'll be speaking on certain early sculptures of Bhagwan Vasudev Krishna. So, only, I'll be covering the sculptures only up to the 7th century C. So, just a little background. So, the earliest reference to Bhagwan Vasudev Krishna is in the Chandogyo Punishat, where he is mentioned as Krishna Devaki Putra and as the disciple of a sage called Ankiti Rasta. Vasudev Krishna was the fountainhead of the Bhagavata sect, which was known for its, you know, philosophy of Ekantika Bhakti, even the Bhagavata talks about Ekantika Bhakti. And even early writers like Panini and Patanjali make a reference to him and this reference comes in the context of his being a deity. There are a number of inscriptions also, which talk about Vasudev Krishna. Like we have the Besnagar inscription, which was actually engraved by a Greek, a Greek ambassador called Heliodorus, who had come from the court of Antiochildas, an Indo-Greek ruler to the court of a Shunga ruler in central India. And he was a great devotee of Bhagwan Vasudev Krishna and he calls himself a Bhagavata and addresses Bhagwan Shri Krishna as Deva Deva Vasudev. Then we have the Ghosundi inscription, which talks about Samkarsana, that is Balarama and Vasudev Krishna. Then we have the Naneghat inscription in Maharashtra near Pune, where the Satavana Queen Naganika invokes Vasudev and Samkarsana at the beginning of her epigraph. Then we have another inscription from Mathura dated to the late first or the early first century BC or the early first century C, where a devotee of Bhagwat Vasudev, or Vasu, is making certain donations to a shrine or mahasthana of Bhagwat Vasudev. This is the, you know, the impression of the Ghosundi inscription. And there is another inscription from a place called Mora in Mathura, which talks about the installation of the images of the Panchavrishni Veers. The Panchavrishni Veers being Vasudev Krishna, his brother Samkarsana, his sons Pradyumna and Samba and his grandson Aniruddha. Then even the Nasik inscription of Vasudev.
Just a minute, are you, your slide supposed to be moving?
Yes, ma'am, they are not moving.
No, they are not, they are not.
Okay, fine, fine, fine. I'll, I'll, I will keep it full screen. So, I was here on this slide, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So, then coming to the Gupta period, there is an inscription at a place called Dihtari near Varanasi, where we have an inscription of the Gupta rulers, Kandagupta, who also mentions Krishna in the context of, you know, Krishna killing council indirectly. It's an indirect reference. And coming to the icons of Vasudev Krishna, we find that, you know, we have individual icons also and depiction of narratives from texts like the Harivamsa and Vishnupurano. The Harivamsa, you know, describes Vasudev Krishna as Vi Puja and Chatur Puja and he is depicted as, you know, described as holding the conch, discuss and mace, Shankha Chakra Gadadhara. Then we also get a reference in the same text that Vasudev Krishna is fighting with a plow and a bow against Jara Sandha. And there are also references where Vasudev Krishna is adorned with the Vanamala, a crown and ornaments made of peacock feathers. So, you know, these were natural materials for his adornment because as a child he was living in the forests of Bhraja. In fact, Krishna calls the Gopas, he refers to the whole community of the Gopas as Vannachara. Vannachara. Then coming to the actual depiction, we, the earliest depiction of Vasudev Krishna and Samkarsana Balarama is found on the coins of an Indo-Greek ruler called Agathoklius. And these were found at a place called Aichanum in north, you know, in somewhere near Afghanistan. So, this is Vasudev Krishna here and he is holding the conch and the chakra. And here is Samkarsana Balarama with the halah or the plow and the musal or the pestle. So, we can see that by the 2nd century BCE, their icon, the respective iconographies of both these deities were very well developed and both of them here are shown like warriors. Then this is a painting dated to around the 2nd century BCE from a cave shelter, a rock shelter in Madhya Pradesh, where we have the depiction of Samkarsana Balarama, Vasudev and their sister Ekannamsha. Ekannamsha is supposed to be, you know, the human form of Yoga Nidra or Yoga Maya. This is, this sculpture, I mean, there are many such sculptures belonging to the Mathura School of Art and they are referred to as the Vrishni tribe. So, here we have the Vrishni siblings, that is Vasudev Krishna, his brother Samkarsana Balarama and their sister Ekannamsha. So, we have many such, you know, these panels from Mathura. They are there in the reserve collection of the Mathura Museum and all these three were worshipped together. So, Krishna was not just worshipped individually, but he was also worshipped along with his brother and along with his sisters and of course along with his sons and grandsons. So, these tribes are also called kinship tribes. So, the kinship, which was very important in the Vrishni clan, is, becomes apparent, becomes evident from these sculptures. This, we do not know if this is a sculpture of Vasudev Krishna or the other four Vrishni Veers, but this was found at a place called Mora, where an inscription was also found, where there is a reference to the temple, a temple, Ashaila Guru of Vasudev Krishna and the other four Vrishni Veers. And a lady called Toshia had installed the images of these five Vrishni Veers there. So, this could be the icon of any of the five Vrishni Veers. Then this is another very early icon from Mathura, which is of course that of Vasudev Krishna. And here, as we can see, he is holding the Gada, the Chakra and the Shankha. He is wearing the Vanamala and this hand is in the Abhayamudra. Sometimes this hand is also called Udyatapani, the raised hand. This is a rather controversial narrative sculpture and there are different interpretations of this. But generally, it is considered that this is a depiction of Vasudev carrying baby Krishna from Mathura to Mahavana Gokula. But there are scholars who say that no such episode, you know, where of Vasudev crossing the Yamuna is mentioned in the Harivamsa. So, you know, how can we have such an early depiction of such an episode? But we, we, we can say that this could have been a part of the oral tradition. And of course, the Harivamsa is not an encyclopedia, which has recorded each and every, you know, aspect of traditions related to Vasudev Krishna. Archaeologist Vinayak Kumar Gupta says that this is actually a part of the, of a Varaha. कृष्णा आक्टिलॉजिस्ट विनय कुमार गुप्ता से डी दिस इस एक्चुअली अन पार्ट ऑफ डी ऑफ अन वराह पैनल एंड दिस इस फ्रॉम अन साइट कॉल्ड गतश्रमा इन मथुरा इट्सेल दें दिस इस अन डिपेक्शन अगेन फ्रॉम मथुरा एंड दिस शोज कृष्णा आगे यंग बॉय किलिंग डी वाइल्ड हॉर्स डेमोंकेशन सो दिस इस डी फेमस डिपेक्शन ऑफ केशी वदा एंड डी किलिंग ऑफ केशी विथ डी लास्ट ब्रजली लॉ ऑफ कृष्णा आफ्टर डेट ही गोज विथ अकुर तू मथुरा एंड नेवर रिटर्न्स दिस इस अन स्कल्प्चर फ्रॉम पवनार विनोबा भावे आश्रम आते पवनार एंड दिस इस डेटेड तू डी वाकतक पीरियड सो अराउंड डी फिफth सेंचुरी सी वेयर वी फाइंड आते वासुदेव इस कैरिंग बेबी कृष्णा फ्रॉम मथुरा तू महावन एक्चुअली महावन इस डी प्लेस वेयर यू नो नंदा डेट होल काउ स्टेशन डेट कैटल स्टेशन वस सपोज्ड तू बी इन डी टर्म गोकुला इस अक्चुअली अन जेनरेट टर्म इट इट बिकम्स अन प्रॉपर नाम ऑफ अन स्पेसिफिक प्लेस ओनली इन डी 16th सेंचुरी सी सो यू नो हर वी कैन सी डेट यू नो वासुदेव इस कैरिंग हिस इनफेंट सन तू डी सेफर डेस्टिनेशन ऑफ महावन दें दिस इस अन डिपेक्शन फ्रॉम डी भीतरी टेंपल डी भीतरी टेंपल वस कंस्ट्रक्टेड बाय डी गुप्ता रुलर्स गुप्ता इंपरर्स उमारा गुप्ता डी फर्स्ट एंड हिस सनस कंधा गुप्ता अराउंड डी मिडिल ऑफ डी फिफth सेंचुरी सी सो दिस स्कल्प्चर इस जनरली जनरली डिपेक यू नो इंटरप्रेटेड आस बीइंग डेट ऑफ वासुदेव हैंडिंग ओवर इनफेंट कृष्णा तू यशोदा बट एक्चुअली इन डी टेक्स्ट वी गेट डी डिस्क्रिप्शन डेट वासुदेव जस्ट केप्ट डी इनफेंट देयर एंड ही टूक यू नो नंदा एंड यशोदा इनफेंट बॉटर एंड जस्ट वेंट अवे सो हर देवर नॉट नॉट तू मेंनी स्पेक्टेटर एंड डी ओनली पर्सन ही सपोक तू वस नंदा बिकॉज़ नंदा वस अन वेरी क्लोज फ्रेंड ऑफ हिस एंड हर दिस दिस आदर लेडी माइट बी रोहिनी एंड दिस चाइल्ड दिस आदर चाइल्ड डेट वी सी हर कुड बी बलरामा एंड दिस इन ऑल प्रोबेबिलिटी इस नंदा दें दिस इस डी फेमस शकता भंग एपिसोड वेयर श्रीकृष्णा आगे इनफेंट एंड ही ओवरटर्न अन कार्ट फुल ऑफ पॉक्स एंड दिस इस ऑफ कोर्स डी वी कैन सी डी इनफेंट किकिंग डी कार्ट फुल ऑफ यू नो अर्थन वेसल एंड हर हिस मदर यशोदा इस यू नो वाचिंग डी होल थिंग इन ग्रेट शॉप दिस इस फ्रॉम डी फेमस देवगढ़ टेंपल डी शावतारा टेंपलेट फ्रॉम देवगढ़ इन उत्तर प्रदेश डेटेड तू डी सिक्स सेंचुरी सी आई विल स्पीक ब्रीफली ऑन डी विश्वरूप मूर्ति ऑफ लॉर्ड विष्णु कृष्णा टिल व्हाटएवर वी सो राइट नौ वस पर्टेनिंग तू कृष्णा इन ब्रजा बट व्हेन वी कम तू डी भगवत गीता वी हैव कृष्णा आगे मैन ऑफ डी यादव चीफ एंड एडल्ट लिविंग इन द्वारका डी क्लोज कंफिडेंट ऑफ डी पांडवास एंड वी हैव डी डिस्क्रिप्शन ऑफ हिस विश्वरूप मूर्ति इन डी 11th अध्याय ऑफ डी भगवत गीता एंड कृष्णा रिवील्स हिस यूनिवर्सल फॉर्म तू अर्जुन एंड वी आर टोल्ड डेट डी यूनिवर्सल फॉर्म कॉन्स्टिट्यूटेड मेंनी बीइंग्स लाइक डी 12 वादित्य डी 8 वसूज 11 रुद्रा डी तू अश्विन एस वेल एस डी सेवन ग्रुप्स ऑफ मारो एंड मोस्ट इट इस असोसिएटेड इन अन वे विद डी द्वारका एक्सट्रेस आर अगेन फ्रॉम मथुरा एंड यशना योग अध्याय ऑफ डी भगवत गीता एंड सच इमेजेस आई मीन डिस्क्रिप्शंस ऑफ सच इमेजेस आर अलसो मिट्टी इन डी अग्नि पुराण बट दिस आर लेटर तू डी भगवत गीता सो दिस इस अन टिपिकल गुप्ता पीरियड विश्वरूप विष्णु फ्रॉम मथुरा सो डी सेंट्रल फेस इस डेट ऑफ वासुदेव डी लाइन फेस इस इंटरप्रेटेड इन तू वेज इट कुड आइदर बी डी फेस ऑफ संकर्षण और नरसिमा एंड हर वी कैन सी वराह सो डी वराह फेस इस इंटरप्रेटेड आस डेट ऑफ प्रद्युमन और डी वराह अवतार एंड वी कैन सी डी प्रभामंडल अन नंबर ऑफ आदर डिटेल्स सो श्री औरबिंदो हैव रिटन आते लेंथ अबाउट डी विश्वरूप मूर्ति एंड ही सेज डेट इट इस डी विजन ऑफ डी वैन इन डी मेंनी डी मेंनी इन डी वैन एंड ऑल आदर वैन एंड डी आइकॉन्स एक्चुअली यू नो डी इन अन वे कन्वे डी से आइडियल डी से आइडिया एंड श्री औरबिंदो फर्दा सेज डेट इफ डी सोल कैन राइव अट यूनिटी विथ डी गॉड हिड इन दिस विजन अर्जुन हैव नॉट येत डॉन डेट डेयरफुल वी फाइंड डेट ही हैव फेयर व्हेन ही सीज और इवन डेट डेट इस टेरिबल इन डी वर्ल्ड लूजेस इट्स टेरर सो व्हेन डी गॉड हिड मैनिफेस्ट्स हिमसेल्फ इन हिस फुल यूनिवर्सल फॉर्म फाइनली भक्ति टेक्स्ट प्लेस ऑफ टेरर एंड डेट इस एक्जेक्टली व्हाट अर्जुन एक्सपीरियंस इस एंड दिस होल विश्वरूप दर्शन योग इस अक्चुअली डी मोमेंट वेयर अर्जुन यू नो ही एक्सपीरियंस गॉड रिलाइजेशन एंड अल्टीमेटली व्हाट श्री औरबिंदो सेज इस डेट डी डिवाइन क्रिएशन इस इतरनल इट इस डी इनफाइनाइट मैनिफेस्टेड सेप्ट अन सेपिटरनली इन फाइनाइट थिंग्स डी स्पिरिट हु कंसील्स एंड रिवील्स हिमसेल्फ फॉरएवर इन हिस इन्यूमरेबल इनफिनिटी ऑफ सोल्स एंड इन डी वंडर ऑफ डी एक्शंस एंड इन डी ब्यूटी ऑफ डी फॉर्म्स सो दिस इस अलसो अन पार्ट ऑफ डी गुप्ता पीरियड विश्वरूप इमेज दिस इस डी रुद्र पंक्ति एंड दिस इस फाउंड फ्रॉम डी प्लेस नोन आगे श्रीकृष्ण जन्मस्थान विच इस डी प्लेस वेयर वंस अपऑन अन टाइम देयर वस अन ग्रैंड टेंपल ऑफ कृष्णा दें कमिंग तू